Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Waukegan City Council Meeting, June 1, 2015. Please stand for the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Roll call.
I'm sorry, roll call first.
Alderman Ziegler. Alderman Ziegler.
Here.
Alderman Moiseo.
Here.
Alderman Villalobos.
Present.
Alderman Newsome.
Present.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Velco.
There.
Alderman Taylor.
Present.
Alderman Cunningham.
Present.
Absent.
Here you go. Father, we thank you again for another city council meeting. We thank you for your blessing. You said in the Scripture that man ought to always pray. We pray for our mayor, for aldermen, for all that's in authority. Pray for those people down in Texas, all over the world. In your big God, bless them, in Jesus' name. Amen. Amen.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Bishop, thank you so much. Sir. No mayor's comments. Audience time. Richard Riley, 123 North Fourth Street.
Good evening, Mr. President. Alderman. My name is Richard Riley. I'm an attorney. My practice is limited to the siting and permitting of wireless facilities. I'm also co-chairman of the Illinois State Wireless Association. And I have been involved, actually, in a number of sites in Waukegan, as Alderman Tempest will attest to. Over the years, we've had many discussions, some of them hard, but we've always been able to reach accommodation on the siting of wireless facilities. I was surprised and really disappointed to learn of the passage of an amendment to your zoning code on April the 6th. On its face, it doesn't sound like much. It is an increase of the setback provisions from 100 feet to 500 feet from any residential lot or residential building. I can tell you honestly that this is going to have a very negative impact on the siting capabilities of the wireless industry, and it has a lot of unintended consequences. I wrote a letter to your planning department. I'd like to read from it, if I may. "It is difficult to understand that when most municipalities are looking for assurances that they will be provided with the best wireless coverage and capacity and have enacted wireless zoning provisions to clarify and expedite wireless deployment in their community, that Waukegan would enact an ordinance that will have a severe negative impact on the ability of wireless carriers to provide the ever-increasing needed robust wireless communications to the businesses and citizens of Waukegan. From economic development standpoint, wireless communication, including the ability to transmit high-speed data, is the new real estate number-one criteria for attracting businesses and industry development. It is also hard to understand that when it is obvious that an ordinance will have a far-ranging impact on a particular industry and that specific projects are actually underway, that no notice was given to that industry, nor any workshops conducted so their input could be factored into discussion in ultimate drafting of the ordinance. The result is that this new ordinance is very negative and clearly violative of the Telecommunications Act and the new FCC regulations." I would really ask this board to, or city council, to send this matter back to the Judiciary Committee so we could make a full-blown presentation. I don't ask you to accept what I'm saying as truth, but I would love the opportunity to prove what I'm saying is accurate. Essentially, what you have done by adopting a 500-foot setback is to eliminate all your commercial and business properties in the city of Waukegan from consideration. Now, your planning department will tell you, but you can file a variance application.
Sir, that's two minutes. Sir.
Okay.
That's three minutes.
Thank you.
If you want to talk to me after the meeting, I'll be here.
All right.
Okay?
Glad to do that.
Thank you. Jamie O'Mara, please.
Jamie O'Mara, 1318 Chestnut Street, Waukegan. I'm here on behalf of Waukegan Main Street. I'm going to have to talk really fast because there's a lot I have to say. First of all, I'd like to say how thrilled we are to see the four homes, the residences, that are going to be landmarked, hopefully, tonight. Two of these are in our downtown Main Street district, so that's very exciting since landmarking, historic preservation, is part of our mission in our economic development planning. So even though it was hard to tell this last weekend that summer is arriving, it is, according to the calendar of events. So here you go, folks. Write it down or check our website. Friday, June 5th, the Library Courtyard concerts begin for the summer. There every Friday from 12 to 1, food is provided by Doc's Side Dogs. Also on this Friday, Billy Gardell, the comedian, will be at the Genesee. And Clockwise Theater has one last weekend with an amazing performance called Break Neck Hamlet. It's a very unusual one-man play. The first act is Break Neck Hamlet, but the second act is sort of Hamlet on Demand, where people can shout out a play or a soliloquy, and he recites it automatically right there. And it's quite fun to see. Also on June 6th, then on Saturday, is an amazingly fun day up at Bowen Park, Waukegan Main Street. We sponsor the kids' art tent at the annual dandelion wine arts festival, and that festival's from 10 to 4:00. It is an all-day family event, so please grab all the kids you know and bring them there because it's a great time. And then later that evening on June 6th, Saturday, is Bike the Amstuds from 4 to 6:00. For something unique on that Sunday, the 7th is the Blessing of the Fleet. This is an annual event at the Yacht Club. This year, it's accompanied by a brunch, so you can check that out on their website. June 9th, Tuesday, the Waukegan Band Concerts start at Steiner. Sure sounds like summer to me, folks, so I hope you're able to enjoy those as much as I am. And then concluding that, June 13th, for the next two weeks, is an annual, sorry, semi-annual Amstuds cleanup that Main Street is sponsoring. If you want more information on any of these events, you can check our website, www.waukeganmainstreet.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Janet Ostrowski.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Janet Ostrowski. I'm a registered nurse. I'm a recent transplant from New York City, and I live at 431 North County Street here in Waukegan. I'm intending to open a business here, but I have to say I'm very dismayed by the performance of the Waukegan Police Department, which was demonstrated to me on Sunday night, May 24th, just the night before the Memorial Day Parade. I was compelled to leave my house because I heard a lot of commotion down the street towards the library in this area here, Clayton and Genesee. Long story short, the street was closed off on Grand Avenue in Genesee and on Clayton in Genesee. And apparently, there had been a fight at what I'm presuming, or was told, was the Hookah Lounge. Apparently, there were something like 200 kids that came. Apparently, there was a fight that broke out, and the police decided to handle it by spraying mace in the faces of children. Well, as a nurse, I'm a mandated reporter, and to me, that's child abuse, okay? I witnessed a party by, whose name I will not mention, who was about this far away from me, because I was going around as a nurse, asking, "Is everybody okay? Is everybody okay?" That includes the police, all right? Because there was so much commotion and sirens blaring and cars racing all around Waukegan, and one police officer came over and said, "Waukegan is shut down." I didn't know that we had martial law announced by one police officer. So I'm asking for policies with respect to how you handle supposed teenagers, if indeed you believe they're gang-related teenagers, which apparently, to me, they were not because I was talking to them and they were very polite. And so, A, how do we handle children who are out of control? Do we spray them with mace? I don't think that's appropriate. And there was a child about 19 years old who was arrested. He was five, just five feet away from me, not even. I should say, five inches away from me. I was talking to him, asking him how he was, and with that, police came over, took advantage of the fact that he was stopped and talking to me, arrested him and said, "You violated your probation," which he was not on, bullied him, bullied him. Michael Neiman should hear that. And arrested him, proceeded to arrest him for having his bicycle on the sidewalk, which he was walking. So he wasn't in violation of anything, and he was let go that night. But what I witnessed was inappropriate handling of a situation by Waukegan police. I have a friend who lives in Waukegan who called the police this past Sunday night. Seems like Sunday night's an issue because of domestic violence that occurred in her apartment building. She shares a home, just a two-story flat. And the party upstairs was causing a problem, was menacing people in the building as well as her. She called the Waukegan police at 12:00 midnight. They didn't show up until 1:30 in the morning, and then proceeded to victimize her and tell her that she was the one that was at fault. I could go on and on and on, and I know you don't have a lot of time, but if you want a list of all the things that I have to say about Waukegan police and the way they handle things, I'll give it to you.
Ma'am, if you want to stay around after the council meeting, I'll be here.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Blanks.
Thank you, Ms. Ostrowski. I believe I pronounced that right. Thank you. Because many times I come down here and guess that would kind of add a little bit of validity to what, some of the complaints that I've had and some of the issues I have, and some of the reasons why I say that I think body cameras is necessary, because they give you, the aldermen, an opportunity to see firsthand what this lady have just shared with you all. And it's good for both sides. It's good for the officers. So, as they say, we can see what they're up against out in the community, and it's also good for accountability. And I'm hoping that you all are seriously considering that, and because we have to have some accountability for what's going on in the community, and it's not always that the community can be your eyes and ears, but body cameras do add a extra help to monitor these situations. Now, I want to call attention also to, on the agenda, waive the bid procedures to purchase USB, I believe these are police vehicles, at $26,577. I think it's about three of them. Yeah. And we're looking at a total of $79,731. And it appeared to me, and I know you say this comes from the drug forfeiture money, but it would appear to me that this money would definitely be best suited to help create some jobs and some preventive measures, and perhaps we wouldn't have to have all this money that goes into the police equipment. So I know that you're limited as to what you can do with that money, but I think you can get creative and create some jobs out here for these people, for some of the youth that are in the community, and perhaps we won't have to have these problems. We don't have to buy all these police equipment because it should be about prevention. Create some jobs and some opportunities, particularly in the first ward, opposed to a surplus and overload of police equipment. So take these things into consideration, take cameras into consideration, and definitely take into consideration the way you deal with the youth in the community, because that is a problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blanks. Minutes, item A, motion to approve the regular minutes, meeting minutes of May 18th, 2015. Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Ziegler. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution, proclamations, presentation, appointments. Resolution for Bike the Amstuds. Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution?
No. We have to ask.
Oh, I'm sorry. That was just to reaffirm, reaffirm that. So we're reaffirming, we took a vote, so now it's on record. Motion on, motion by Alderman Villalobos, second by Alderman May. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Thank you. Labor Relations Committee, we met today at 5:00. As all of you know, I sent you the labor agreement that we thought was adequate and fair for both parties. I sent you copies of the changes as well as the entire contract. I presented that, I presented that to Labor Relations Committee. They passed that unanimously. I would have to say that the contract, from my opinion, was three years too late. We never should have taken three years to sign that contract. I can guarantee you, if I'm fortunate enough to be mayor again, it will never happen again. It was a miserable three years, coming from the police department and have to deal with the men I grew with and the department I loved, and I was being adversarial to a department I came from, and that was very, very disconcerting for me. I would like to make a motion to accept the contract as presented. All of you read it? You read all the changes? I ask you to call me if you, if you had any concerns or issues. No one did. And I'll make the motion to accept the contract as presented, and Alderman Velco will second it. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Also, while I'm here and have the mic, I'd like to thank two men who were instrumental in making this happen. These two men, Officer Costas Tavares and Officer Barry Grabert, stood up and agreed that it was time to sell this contract. They had the courage and commitment to take this contract back to their membership and let them agree or disagree with it. They voted 97% to accept the contract. So Costas and Barry, thank you so much for your efforts, and I appreciate it, and I can assure you, I won't let you down the next couple of years, guys, okay? So thank you very much. Next is the Judiciary Committee. Alderman Moiseo, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item A, adopt a right-of-way of easement agreement for the court expansion, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Velco. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Thank you. Item B is being held over in the Judiciary Committee. Item C, adopt an ordinance approving zoning calendar 2460, final plat of the Bridge Point North subdivision petitioner, Bridge Development, located at McGaw Business Center, Waukegan and McGaw Roads, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Velco. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Thank you. Items D and, oh, excuse me, no. Items, yes. Items D and E are going to be held over. There's some language things we have to button up a little bit, but they'll be back at the next council meeting, not the next judiciary meeting, but the next council meeting they will be on. Item F, adopt an ordinance approving calendar L-1-15, landmarking of the Elijah P. Ferry Residence, petitioner Ty Roner and Rahana Nicolick, located at 308 Julian Street, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Velco. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Thank you. Item G, adopt an ordinance approving calendar L-2-15, landmarking of the James Y. Corey Residence, petitioner Ty Roner and Linda Leaf, located at 321 North Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Velco. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Thank you. Item H, adopt an ordinance approving calendar L-3-15, landmarking of the David Ballantyne Residence, petitioner Ty Roner and Charles Culver, located at 837 North Sheridan Road, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
And item 8, I, adopt an ordinance approving calendar L-4-15, landmarking of the Azalee Z Blackett Residence, petitioner Ty Roner and Barbara P. Carroll, located at 616 North Sheridan Road, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Velco. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
And that is it, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Moiseo. Finance Committee, Alderman Velco, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Finance Committee met this evening. Item A, there's a motion waiving the bid process and authorizing the Information Technology Director to enter into an agreement with Cayenta, Division of Harris, for an amount not to exceed $248,780 in order to upgrade the city's enterprise resource planning system from V 7.5.2 to V 7.7.0. The funding code is 100-103-626-495 and 555-916-026-495. The committee recommends, and I so move, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Taylor. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Item B, the committee recommends authorizing the use of general obligation bonds, Series 2015A, bond funds to award a contract to D apostrophe Land, D-Land Construction, in an amount not to exceed $945,000 to fund the renewal, repair, and/or replacement of city roadways and ancillary expenses. The budget code is 312-131227619, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman May. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Item C, the committee authorized the use of, voted to authorize the use of general obligation bonds, Series 2015A, bond funds to award a contract to Peter Baker &amp; Sons in an amount not to exceed $6,555,000 to fund the renewal, repair, and/or replacement of city roadways and ancillary expenses. The budget code is 312-131227619, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Newsome. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Item D, the committee recommends a resolution reallocating 2015 volume cap to the Village of Buffalo Grove, Illinois, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Taylor. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
The final item, Your Honor, discussed was item E. The committee authorized the director to enter into an agreement with MAD Bomber for an amount not to exceed $25,000 for the 4th of July fireworks display. The funding code is 100-106-024474, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Ziegler. Ziegler, I'm sorry. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Next is the Public Safety Committee. Alderman Tempest.
Thank you, Your Honor. First motion would be to authorize to pay the 2015-2016 Annual Membership Assessment Fee, as for this fiscal year, for $120,583 to the Northeastern Illinois Regional Crime Lab, 1000 Butterfield Road, Suite 109, 1009 Vernon Hills. This fee will be paid from line item 100-608-524436.
Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Newsome. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Falco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Item B, authorize the pay the 2015-2016 annual membership fee of $11,875, to Northeast Multiple Regional Training Incorporated, 355 Skokie Tree Plaza, North Aurora, Illinois, 60542. This fee will be paid from line item 100-607-724431. I would so move.
Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Newsome. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Falco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Item number C, waive the bid process and purchase four 2015 Ford Police Interceptor SUV Vs from Aurora Brothers Ford under state bid number 4017159, for an amount of $30,329 each, totaling $121,316. Funding for this purchase will be taken from the police department's vehicle line 100-607-526493, and I would so move.
Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Newsome. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Falco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Thank you. Item D, waive the bid process and purchase three 2015 Ford Explorers from Wright Automotive under the State of Illinois Joint Purchasing Contract, number 4017336, in the amount of $26,577 per vehicle, totaling $79,731. Funding for this purchase will be taken from the Federal Drug Asset Forteure Foundation, line item 296-629626493. I would so move, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Newsome. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Falco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Item E, waive the bid procedure and purchase one 2015 Ford Police Interceptor SUV from Aurora Brothers Ford under state bid 4017159, for an amount of $30,329. Funding for this purchase will take from the State Drug Asset Forteure Fund, item 295-629526493. I would so move.
Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Newsome. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Falco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
There is no old business. There are no reports or communications, new business. Item A, approval of payroll, regular payroll, dated May 29th, 2015, in the amount of $1,355,023.62. Final payout in the amount of $33,661.47, and a settlement check in the amount of $12,100. Motion by Alderman Falco, second by Alderman May. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Falco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Item B, approval of bills dated June 1st, 2015, in the amount of $2,690,586.40. Motion by Alderman Falco, second by Alderman Newsome. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Falco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Item C, approval of raffle sale application from the Rotary Club of Waukegan. Motion by Alderman Moizio, second by Alderman Ziegler. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Item D, motion to approve the use of Steiner Pavilion by Lakefront Soul Fest from 4:00 AM to 9:00 PM on August 7th, 2015. This is an approved outdoor special event. Motion by Alderman Villalobos, second by Alderman Ziegler. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Falco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Item E, resolution to approve the closing of Green Bay Road from Waukegan Airport Show from 12:00 PM to 3:00 PM on Friday, September 11th, 2015, from 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM on Saturday, September 12th, 2015. And the resolution, the resolution is required for I-DOT, so this for our air show. Motion by Alderman Falco, second by Alderman Villalobos.
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Falco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
There are no ordinances, resolutions. Alderman's time, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Do you want to say anything?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm trying to get a picture. No, pass. Alderman Moizio.
Real quick, this Sunday, they had a mass at the San Antonio Station for a retiring teacher, Mary Ann Dutcher, who taught kindergarten at San Antonio Station for 41 years. Anybody that teaches that long. I've been doing it 25, feels like 50, coach down there. How long did you have, coach?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven, so.
Forty is old, man.
Forty-one years teaching kindergarten. She had all three of my daughters. I've asked the clerk and the mayor if we could get a resolution for her for the next council meeting. I think it's deserved. Anybody that gives 41 years to the youth of Waukegan deserves as much kudos as possible. We all know her husband, too. He's a former treasurer, Pat Dutcher. So I'd just like to invite everybody here that knows Mary Ann Dutcher to be at the next council meeting, so we can give her this resolution. And that is all. Thank you very much.
Alderman Villalobos.
Yeah, two things I'd like to bring up. Number one, our past Memorial Day Parade. I'd just like to say thank you to all those people that attended. The weather was not in our favor at the beginning, but ended up clear in at the end. And it was really great to see the youth of Waukegan, the JRTC program, which is substantial, at Waukegan High School, all those representatives, all those children, youth there. It was a great sight to see them and to see them marching, and for me personally, me participating in the parade. The second thing I want to bring up, it's a little bit more closer to home. I'd like to just bring up the Justice Howell. There was a demonstration on Saturday, March 23rd, that approximately 40 or so demonstrators were walking down Grand Avenue and into downtown Waukegan, and actually, literally, in front of my door. And I watched and observed the demonstration for about an hour and a half or so. And I'd just like to say, first of all, like, it's a tragedy. It's a great tragedy, it's a terrible tragedy, what happened to Justice Howell. And I believe that the people that demonstrated have every right to demonstrate. I was actually happy to see a demonstration, but I thought it was unfortunate that there shouldn't, there wasn't enough traction for them. In the end, it looked to me like that demonstration did more or less just disturb people Saturday afternoon that were, they were going through traffic. I heard one demonstrator say that, looking at the traffic they had stopped, that if he was in that car that they were standing in front of, he'd be upset. And when I heard that mention, I thought that the messaging behind that demonstration gets lost. I thought that there's a little bit more that could have been done to demonstrate in regards to Justice Howell and that tragedy. But, you know, it's just something that I saw and observed, and I was hoping to get an opportunity to talk to one of the organizers and see, you know, how they organize it, what their plans were, and to see if, you know, there's a little bit more that could have been done in regards to that. I haven't seen anything or heard anything in the news about it, but I could have been missed something. So a demonstration like that should have impact, you know? And from my viewpoint, it seemed like it was minimal in terms of what it could have done. I think the police officers did a good job of making sure that the demonstrators were moving along the street safely. They directed traffic as necessary. But like I said, it's something I think is every person's right to demonstrate for that, you know? But I thought it could have just been a little bit more, a little bit more action behind that. So that's all. Thank you.
How about if I go to Zion next time?
That actually was a question of mine, too, you know? Waukegan on a Saturday afternoon in downtown Waukegan, there's no one here to demonstrate downtown Waukegan is pretty much, you get almost nothing there.
Alderman Newsome.
Pass.
Alderman Tempest.
Pass.
Alderman May.
Thank you. I have just one item. I just wanted to send out my sympathies to the Sabanjan family. Lorraine Sabanjan was Mayor Sabanjan, the first Mayor Sabanjan's wife, and Mayor Sabanjan held office for 24 years in Waukegan. So she was the first lady of Waukegan for 24 years. Definitely a local icon in my mind. So I just wanted to send out my condolences. She's an important person in our community, and she's lived in the Seventh Ward, and I just wanted to send my sympathies and take note of that. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Alderman Falco.
I'll pass tonight. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor.
I just want to mention that there was some mix-up on garbage pickup this week, so if you happen to live in Regency Woods, your garbage was not picked up on Friday like it was supposed to be, but it should have been picked up today, and it will resume back to normal schedule on Thursday. And I also want to ask, there was a armed robbery in our ward this past Tuesday at the Rainbow Dress Store. If any of you have information about it, it happened at 9:30 in the morning. If you have information, please call our Waukegan Police Department. It was quite an upset for people, so if you could please contact the police department. There were people who left the scene that did not serve as witnesses, that did see things, so please feel free to call. Thank you.
Motion adjourned by Alderman Falco, second by Alderman Tempest. All's in favor?
Aye. Opposed? Meeting adjourned.